Peter Hutkins is the second. Any changes, omissions, errors, deletions, corrections, anything on the minutes?
I have none.
None?
None. Again, I want to thank Susan for the great job she's doing.
Indeed.
Hearing no changes or anything on the corrections on the minutes, all those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed?
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
I keep forgetting you're somewhere out in Zoom land because you're not here anymore, but thanks for the great job you do.
You're welcome.
Next item is citizens' comments. If there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Are there any citizens' comments? State your name and give us your comment.
Paul Bidgood, thank you, Chairman, and the board members. I had come here previously concerning the Bailey Hill Road, and I'd just like to get an update of where the town stands on reviewing that situation.
Sure. I believe it's still in our attorney's hands, and they're still doing some research on it. And as soon as we get back the information from him, then we'll be able to proceed further from there. But at this point, we don't have anything new right now.
Is there any set deadline or schedule for him to respond?
I don't know if we have a set deadline. I imagine it should be coming up relatively soon. There is some concern about having a site visit to see what's going on, so once the weather lets us do that, that'll be included also, so that'll be part of the process, too.
Okay, thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Julie, can you take us through our old business list?
I can. So, the solar field, I did hear back from Greenbacker. She has moved the process to their legal department, who is putting together a purchase and sale for us to review, so...
Really?
Yes.
They didn't say how much.
In a year, we'll get it, and we'll review it. Hopefully, that'll process soon, and it'll at least be moving to a different department, so...
So, every month that goes by, the price drops a bit, right?
Yeah.
Because of the grades?
I will leave that for you to negotiate.
I would think so.
So, I wanted to just kind of update you guys. For those who were on the board during Irene, you may perhaps remember that we did this during Irene. The state has opened up the floodplain FEMA buyout program for structures that are in the floodplain, who have had repetitive loss, structures that really just shouldn't be where they are. It is a voluntary program. Property owners, we have five, who have requested to participate in the buyout program in two pretty distinct locations throughout town, and then one kind of straggler out there. But we are underway in that process. Again, like I said in my memo to you, it's kind of a bittersweet thing, because you're removing structures from the ground list. That's never positive. However, it also is removing properties from the floodplain that every time sustain damage. So, just as a reminder, no tax dollars, no local tax dollars go to the buyouts of these programs. These are FEMA, they're purchased through FEMA. The town has given the money to buy the properties and to remove all structures. At that point, the town owns the property, and it remains town property in perpetuity. So, if you recall, there was the, you know, two out on Kingsbury Road that we did, and thank goodness, because had they have been there during this past July flood, we would have had an issue. And then there was one on Route 11 West. So, the properties are, there's two additionals on Route 11 West that sustained damage after Irene, but also sustained damage again. They are looking for a buyout. There is one out on Potash Brook Road that is looking for a buyout. And there are two on Fenton Road, again, two structures that the river truly went through their structures. So, two structures on Fenton Road. So, just wanted to give you an update on those, that we have had people interested in the buyout. They are properties that make sense. The other thing that we're doing, and I didn't put in your memo, NRCS, which is part of the Emergency Watershed Protection Program through USDA, gives funds. Again, the town is just a conduit for the funds to flow through, but these are projects that do bank stabilization work. We were very fortunate this time. I fought for it, we got it. It will 100% fund stream bank stabilization for certain private properties in town, which is really helpful. So, people who do still want to stay in their home, they're not quite eligible for that buyout, but they have significant damage that the next event could cause significant damage to a structure. So, there's a whole eligibility process. But we got those 100% funded, so we're out to bid now for engineering on those projects. We have 10 sites. One of, two of those sites are actually town sites. One of them is the debris pile at, right by Frasier's, Route 11 West, almost right across from Reservoir Road, there's that massive debris pile. So, this, that debris removal is eligible. We did get approval under NRCS, so we're going to do that work under NRCS and not FEMA, so that we will have no match requirement. And the other one is Fenton Road. If you go out Fenton Road, you can see where the river jumped the bank there, and Fenton Road became the river. So, there's a lot of bank stabilization work there, almost 200 feet of riprap, so it's a very large project that this will fund as well, but it will also affect eight of our other private properties. So, that was really good, good news.
When we do the material removal, especially the one on, across from Lover's Lane, the Reservoir Road, I mean, do we get to keep the material?
Yes. So, any of the debris that we have removed, we were approved for several debris removal sites throughout town. All of that gravel is either stockpiled in our pits, some is stockpiled down at the sewer plant. So, what Kirby is doing now is he's going to be going out to bid soon to bring in a crusher, to crush that material. We're going to sift for sand, hopefully get a couple thousand yards of sand, and then the rest will be crushed into gravel to contribute to our stockpile. So, there will be several thousand yards of crushed gravel coming back to us. Yep.
Those are some big piles.
Those are some big piles. Yes.
Julie, I have a question about the Fenton Road site, because I live out that way, and I watched what happened there. And the new culvert on Potash Brook Road worked. I watched several trees hang up and then just suck right through.
Yeah, good.
And I think they all went down to Route 11 and hung up on the highway bridge, and that's what diverted Potash Brook there. Does the state have any plans to do anything to open that up at all?
I haven't heard, I haven't heard any of their, any of their plans for their structures. They have a few that need upsizing of themselves on their own that would help us tremendously, but I don't know what their plans are, and I don't know if they're just regrouping, I'm not sure.
I just wondered, thanks.
Yeah. And then, a couple of quick things. One really good thing to report on, I have talked to you guys about in the past since the event in July, we've talked about some different disaster management initiatives that we were working on. One of those is what we've been calling the RoboCall system, although it's not RoboCall anymore. That's dating myself. It's a different, more technology advanced system. But Alicia was able to get us into a really great contract with a company called Catalyst. Catalyst is normally a little over 7,000 a year. She secured it for 3,600 a year, and we just signed a four-year contract, so it gives us an ample amount of time to try it out. But basically, this is a system that not only can be used during a major event, but we can use, you know, Jeff's flushing sewer lines. There is, we can create categories of people in town, so maybe we're flushing sewer lines. It sends out, it sends out a message to anybody that would be on the sewer system, because we would have created that database. It'll send out a message. So, people can sign up to receive it via text, via email, via voice, however you sign up is how you'll get the message. We've been looking to do this for a number of years, find a system where we could break, break people up by road, by service, all different kinds of ways. And then you can obviously go townwide if there's a major event, or emergency shelter has opened at such and such location, you know. So, the big, the hardest part of this will be creating that database. You know, phone companies are not allowed to give you phone numbers, so we'll have to create it, which is fine. This is a good year to have, you know, we'll put something, we'll go out in tax bills, we'll put something out with water sewer bills, the elections, we'll have tables set up at the elections for people to sign up and just start really getting the word out as we build that. It's also another avenue where we can use to keep track of the vulnerable populations, so that if there is a power outage, we know that Misses so-and-so is on oxygen out at the end of whatever road. So, we can keep track of those vulnerable populations as well, and make sure the EMTs go check on those people. So, this is a really good first step for us.
Can I ask a question about that? Is there a possibility for people to go on our town website and sign up for this, put their information?
Yeah, we will have that, yes.
Okay.
Once we get, once we actually get the database to build with Catalyst, they have to give us that platform first. Yes, we'll have all kinds of avenues for people to sign up, and to receive the messaging however they choose. The other thing that we love about this is that you don't have to just be a Chester resident. So, people who are second homeowners, whose residence is here, but they're not, will have an idea of what's going on.
It sounds like a great way of communication for a lot of different reasons.
We're hoping it'll be a good jump.
And we always struggle with that, how to get the word out for certain things, and boy, this would seem like it would be ideal.
Yeah. And we're going to try to be, you know, we're going to try to hone in on the specific reasons we use it, like, we don't want to abuse it either, and just junk up people's emails or texts or so on and so forth. So, be really strict about what we're using it for, but it will be a great way to communicate.
Sounds a lot like the system the highway department, the state highway department uses for road closures and that sort of thing.
They may use, they may use a very similar system.
Sign up by county, and you get notified when there's a blockage or anything like that.
Do the schools have something like that, too?
Yes, they do.
Where they call you up and say, hey, two-hour delay, no school today, canceled afternoon stuff, yeah?
Yeah, so it'll be helpful. And then that dovetails right into, so we did receive money. We received a little over $13,000 from the Vermont Community Foundation to start the fund for, to start funding the CERT program, which, again, is a team that we will hopefully put into place and will help us with this, building this database, actually, is hopeful. So, we will be looking for approximately 15 to 20 people to kind of start, but this 13,000 will fund, our people will need to do the Train the Trainer program, so it will pay for their salaries to do that. It will also pay for their salaries to actually, once we get the 15 to 20 people that are interested in CERT, will be, you know, it'll pay for the salaries to train those people, and then it will outfit those people with the PPE that they need. We're also going to be using it to buy some basic laptops that are necessary, some traffic cones, a few other things that we need to have during events. So, that was really exciting, and we received a grant, again, through Vermont Community Foundation, for $11,000 that we can use for our National Net Out. And that's the event that we're choosing to use it with, but the great thing is, we'll be buying a outside PA system, an outside projector and screen that can be used at, I table some, some commercial-grade pop-up tents that can be used at any event, so Fall Festival could use it, Winter Carnival could use it. It'd be great, just products to have, and equipment to have for all kinds of events, but, so we were...
Julie, what's the, an acronym, the CERT, C E R, C E R team?
Civilian Emergency Response Team, I believe is what it stands for. So, they're trained to, basically, this is, this is the team of people that, when we have another flood, instead of using fire personnel or police officers to block a road, their services are needed someplace else at a higher level issue. These individuals are given direction, go block off Mountain View, go block off Quarry Road, go block, and so these people can go do that, they can stand guard, and they're trained in traffic control and, and for their first responders, they can't do EMT level, but they're certainly first responders if there's an issue. So, yeah, it's kind of that first line of communication.
There's so many acronyms, I lose track of them all and try to figure out what they mean sometimes.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And then, there will be more coming, the next meeting on the Community Health Program. Mike will be here to give an update on that. We, let's see, where did I put this in here? Oh, we are going to be applying, Rescue Inc. last year got a chunk of money, a large chunk of money, to start their community response, their community health initiative for the towns that they cover. And through, so Mike called Senator Sanders' office, had a conversation about if this project is something that would fit into that, because we knew that other ambulance services gotten this. They said absolutely, it would be a very strong application. So, we are going to apply for federal funding, you know, to give that program a boost if we can. If we can't, then we'll tailor it down and graduate in, as we had initially planned. But if we could get a lump of money, and the other one thing, since we have not yet received our ambulance, we are asking for funding for the ambulance. So, if we could get that, that would save the taxpayers 350,000 out of our capital plan. So, we're going to try, we'll see what happens, we're going to try. And then, one thing I just, it wasn't in my email to you, or my memo to you guys, but, so I just came back from a manager's conference in Woodstock, just, it really was just a phenomenal conference with 25 of us, just getting together and hashing out issues and what are people doing. And one thing that everybody was talking about is public engagement, but also, working, not working better with their boards, but, but boards having better collaboration on issues like budgets and those types of things. And so, one of the things I was thinking about, I don't know, I wanted to get kind of your pulse on this, was several of the towns last year did, the select boards did a board retreat. They stayed within their town, they didn't make it, like, super fancy, but they didn't do it at town hall. They went somewhere, reserved a space, and did an actual board retreat. And I, and I really liked what John Potter did down in Braderboro. The board was there as a group, you had targeted issues in the town that they discussed. Again, open to the public, it has to be. But the other thing that they did at that point is they had each department head come in at your board retreat, and, and there was a visioning process with the board and the department heads, to have a visioning process of not just immediate for that department, but five-year and then a 10-year visioning. And it gave the, the department heads an opportunity to talk to you about what their vision is, but also gave the board an opportunity to talk to the department head about what your vision is. And when it came to the budgeting process, John said it helped immensely, because everybody just, it was more than just 10 minutes in a select board meeting. It was a real conversation around, as we're looking at budgets, we know we have budget issues, every municipality in the country is having budgeting issues right now, and allowing some of those really in-depth conversations around, so a department head knows where you're coming from, your concerns as you go back to your constituents, because you're the elected face, right? And allows you to hear from them about, but here's really what's happening, because you guys don't know what's happening when they're plowing a road, that's not your role, right? So, it allows that really good dialect. And so, I don't know if you guys are interested in something like that. I was thinking, like, maybe May, maybe May-ish, I don't know, how do you feel about that?
I've been involved with retreats like that before, and the positive part of it that I've found is the conversation flows easier. Even though it's open to the public, you just seem like there's more ideas exchanged, and there's more give and take, and there's more conversation on topics. I found it helpful when we've had retreats in the past, I think it was school board retreats, and if I remember right, I think we might have had one as a select board also, but that was a while ago.
I feel like we did something here. I feel like we did, like, a workshop here.
It had been at Reed X or something.
Okay.
I forget. But it just, in my recollection, it always seemed like the conversations were more in-depth, more open, and more fluid. There was just more communication, it seems, that, more so that you would get at a meeting where it's a little more formal, and it's a little more straightforward. And our meetings are in public, not necessarily with the public, but if you start having department heads coming in, it was helpful to talk to people face-to-face, one-on-one with issues from both sides. I, I'm, I would be for something like that. I'd be, you know, I'd welcome a conversation or a retreat like that. I just, you know, maybe Bermuda or something.
Chester would be just fine.
We should, we should do it every year, and we'll start, we'll go alphabetically, starting with A, Albany. Keep the budget down. Lee, do you want to make a comment, or?
Well, I think it's a great idea, too. One of the things we've often commented about is how difficult it is to actually talk about stuff as a board, and so, having that opportunity to work together and spend a little bit more than an hour, two, or three, or whatever it turns out to be, I think it's a great idea. My recommendation would be mud season rather than construction season, but...
Okay. So, maybe sooner rather than later, like April?
What's that?
You mean sooner rather than later, so like in April?
Yeah.
That's slamming.
I mean, it just...
Come on, guys, work with me.
Yeah, I don't care, I can make time for it, it just, you know, like I said, when it's not in the middle of building season...
Sure.
It's easier for me than possibly others.
Sure.
I'm a fan, the last two companies that I worked for made it a point to do off-site meetings with leadership teams, and it really helped lay, lay out the vision, like you're talking about, and also to make those connections, because, you know, I think everybody here appreciates all our department heads and all the work that they do, but to sit down and have a conversation that's more open and flowing, to Hurney's point, would, would go a long way to kind of help cement those connections. I'm a fan.
Okay.
And there's no good time, so just let me know.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Surf right in with everybody else, yeah.
Okay, all right, then I'll work on putting something together.
And maybe before that happens, we can get together and just during one of the meetings, talk about what topics or what things we'd like to discuss, just to have some kind of a little outline to go by, instead of just going right into it without any...
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Are you thinking with each department head, like, a lot of time?
I'm thinking that I would have all the department heads come in together, because we meet, department heads meet every Monday, and we do that so that there is a, you know, so that Highway knows what water is doing, and they all know what Matt's doing in Rec, and, you know, that type of a thing. So, I would probably have them all come in, whether or not they chose to stay for the whole session, but, you know, there may be things that come up in the discussion that, you know, Kirby's talking about with Highway, that, you know, Jeff had a thought on, or, you know, and just really keeping it more dialect, more, just more conversation, open, fluid conversation, I think, would be really beneficial. So, I would probably invite them all to come.
Jeff, you got, Jeff, you got to come up to the mic and give us your name.
Quick comment, I think it'd be a great idea for, for the boards and the department heads to get their, their goals in the, you know, lined up. I mean, I've always had five- and 10-year goals, we've always discussed it with Julie and stuff, but, you know, maybe if we get together, we could find a way to maybe expedite certain things. You know, it's, we know the red tape can be long and drag things out sometimes, but maybe that will help, I don't know. But also, the department head meetings is one of the best things that we've had implemented in a long time, because we do, all the department heads understand what the other guys got going for projects, and sometimes, you know, Kirby's going to dig up a road, or I'm going to dig up a road, and Kirby's like, well, wait a minute, I got to do this, or whatever. So, we, we, even though Kirby and I talk when we can, we don't always catch up with each other that, that easy, you know, but, so just having department heads get together and go over what's going on, it's, I think it saves us all a lot of time and better communication, so.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, so I'll work on, I'll work on some ideas, of things that I know that we're talking about, and I'll get that on an agenda, and then I'll work on a date.
Are we thinking it would be like on a Saturday?
I'm thinking like a Saturday, yeah.
Saturday morning or afternoon?
It would be, it would be good to do the DRB and the Planning Commission, even if it had to be a different day.
Yeah, I would say start with you guys and the department head, and then, yes, we could certainly bring in other boards.
We actually did that a couple of years ago.
We did, we had a joint with them.
Yeah.
And we could certainly do that, again, we could do a joint with them.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea.
Yeah, okay, all right, I'll pull some stuff together.
Anything else on old business from any board members?
I just have one quick update. At the CCC meeting yesterday, we, we did bring up the Class IV road issue, the project, and it was more like an informational meeting and a brainstorming, handed out some maps with the roads on it, and we're looking for feedback from them. Everybody's going to take them with them, take a look at them, and bring their thoughts to the next meeting to see where we go from, from here.
How often do you guys meet?
Once a month.
Okay.
It's, it's, it'll, the process will be a little slower, but that's, it's okay, because I think this topic is important, that we do our due diligence and make sure we get the communication and people involved with this. And word has gotten out, I've gotten a few people already talking to me, and most were positive, but there was one, one that was a little confrontational, but that's part of the, part of the process.
Yeah.
Just so we get the people involved and the information out there and stuff. So, I just want to thank the CCC, and next time, we, Peter, we will warn that meeting, so...
I apologize.
I appreciate that you booked out like that, but I, I think we probably could have slid through that one, but that's, you're right by...
No, I, it's, truthfully, I've been involved in several of those before with other boards, and I don't wish to do it again.
What nights, is it the first Tuesday?
First Tuesday of every month, yep.
I'll get it on my calendar.
At five to six.
Five o'clock, five to six. Usually, it's at the library, but once the weather changes, we're outside.
Okay.
Probably at the bridge. Anything else on old business? All right, we'll move on. The next item on our agenda is a request from the American Legion for a coin drop. I just want to start out by mentioning, they're asking for two, and then the, the next item after that is also a coin drop from Ruckup, and both organizations have been asked through these coin drops over the years, and they've both been approved, and they're pretty much the two that we've always had and stuff. Our policy only says that we're supposed to grant two a year. That would be up to the board if we wanted to change it, or reconsider that stipulation, or have anything different. If we do decide to go that route, it would have to be a separate agenda item at a future meeting to increase that amount. At this time, we'll at least consider the two that we have and start from there, and then, depending on the consensus of the board, how it wants to proceed, whether we want to revisit that policy, or keep it the way it is, or take some other course. But anyways, the first one is the American Legion, and I guess it's Mr. Wendell, you here to speak to that issue?
Evening. I'm the post 67 adjutant and service officer here in town, and the coin drops, we didn't get to do one last year, but the coin drops are a great way for us to raise money. We use the money to help veterans in our community and surrounding communities for such things as wheelchair ramps, travel to hospital visits, electric bills, and so on. I've been through the paperwork. I spoke with Mr. Pickering, the state highway department guy, today. He said he's good for it, and will sign off if the selectmen, if you guys agree on it. He's moved us down to Marshall Road, where the field is where the fire department sells the Christmas trees, right in that neck of the woods, due to requirements by the State Department of Highways. I have applied for two spots, one in the fall and one this spring. Either one will work for me, whatever you guys decide to do. If Ruck, if Ruck is, or Ruck, I'm not familiar, I'm familiar with the group, but I'm not that familiar with the organization. As long as it's for the vets, that's all that matters to us. And the police chief signed off on it as well yesterday morning, and just would like to get approval for it, and, and yes, we'd like to be able to do two of them a year down the road, if that's at all possible.
The American Legion, they're an extremely important part of this town. They've contributed a lot to this town, and especially to the veterans, as demonstrated by their work that they do, and I think it's an important organization. I, I don't have any objection to it as far as the first date, but like I said, I think we're going to have to have another discussion on it if we wanted to add that second date, which is definitely a possibility. And does any board member have any questions or any concerns about this?
Well, I know in the past, the, the reason why we put a cap on it was to prevent many coin drop collection...
coin drop collection. You know, some people were uncomfortable with it, whatever. At this point, since we have the policy that says two, I think we've got to stick with that unless we decide to change it. So my recommendation would be to approve the May 24th date for the Legion and then, I don't see Mr. Legasi here today, but we can approve that one for August. I mean, they're not back-to-back, they're not right on top of each other. And then if you guys decide you want to come back in the fall and ask for another one, we can consider it that time. But I think we need to have that internal conversation.
Okay.
As you suggested. So that would be my recommendation. You know, we're going to disappoint somebody, but...
I agree with Lee that, you know, you made, you made the policy. Let's stick with the policy. Any other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion to approve the American Legion coin drop for the date of May 24th with a rain date of May 25th.
So moved.
Second, Lee's the motion and Peter's the second. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor of approving the coin drop, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you and...
Thank you very much.
...all the work you do in town. And it might be up for another consideration. We'll see.
We certainly appreciate it.
We could have that discussion again.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Go for the next one, kind of get my little two-two.
All right. The next one is an organization, Ruckup, and it's a veterans' organization. I think they're based out of New Hampshire, but they service a lot of veterans in southern New Hampshire and in this area also. I don't remember the exact details. Usually it was Mr. George Legasi that came and spoke to us regarding this, and I think they've been doing this for quite a while.
We've been, yeah, we've been approving them for several years now. And they do service our veterans in Chester as well.
Yeah, and that question had, has come up in the past and they were specific about definitely knowing people that they've helped in Chester. It wasn't an organization just rolling in, asking for money and without a direct connection to the town. I wish I knew a little bit more about it to fill you in on it, but I just remember that it was a worthy organization and it's been asking for this for a number of years. I don't know how long it's been, but it's been a while.
As I recall, they provide different services than the Legion, and I do recall vaguely that first meeting when they came in and explained some of that. So, I mean, I'd be in favor of it.
If that's the case, I would entertain a motion to approve Ruckup's request for a coin drop. And theirs is...
August.
August 18.
August 18.
August 18, 17.
17.
17. A rain date being the 18th. And it would probably be, end up being in the same location as the Legion one because that's where everything's been happening as far as coin drops. They've transferred them closer to town because of traffic and some other issues that were heading in there. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Yep, again, second, Lee's the motion and Peter's the second. Any further discussion on this?
I did want to just comment that I've seen Ruckups, they have a coin jar or something at the Sunoco. I don't know if they have others elsewhere, but I think they have collection points around town, so, but I'm happy with this one as well.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nope, Mr. Legasi's okay. It's the weather that's keeping him away. Because he's, he's been pretty consistent about being at these meetings.
I'm sure it's weather. I'm sure it's a weather driver.
To the issue.
I've had all the weather today. We haven't missed any.
Get to stretch your legs, Peter.
I know, you have to watch out, sometimes I don't get up so well.
Next item on our agenda is a, the wastewater asset management plan, and Naomi Johnson is here. She's one of Dufrane Group's engineers, and she's here to give us a summary.
Do you want to be able to sit? Do you want me to lower that?
No, I'm fine.
You've got three projects here, so it's...
Yes, so if I get tired, I'll sit down.
Okay.
I sit down most of the day, so it's good to stand.
So take us through this, Naomi.
Sure. So the asset management plan, which is specifically for the wastewater system, first a little background on what was done for this report. And what it is, is really looking at the assets of the wastewater system. So that means the collection system, the piping, manholes, pump stations in town, and also the wastewater treatment facility. So the purpose of the asset management plan is to basically do an inventory of what you have for assets and then, and to assess them. We look at things like the age, the condition of them. And as part of this project, what was done for the collection system was a survey, basically a topographical survey to go out and locate every single manhole in the system and then also do an inventory report on the individual manholes, the condition of the interior. In conjunction with that, there was closed-circuit TV inspection of all the pipes in the system. And that was a pretty significant effort and it took quite a, quite a while, a couple seasons to complete. And then for the pump stations, the equipment at each station was inventoried as well as at the wastewater treatment facility. So once that, the field work is complete, then we basically do an assessment of the condition and a comparison. And the objective is to rank all the assets and to identify which are the highest risk or the highest priority for doing improvements. The wastewater treatment facility was not as in-depth as the rest of the system. That does actually take a separate report to, to do a more complete analysis for the state, and that's primarily because of the different processes that are involved. You have to look at future regulations and make recommendations with those in mind. So again, the asset management plan is more of an inventory and a ranking of priorities for improvements. So with that background, I can tell you that the highest priority items to address are the First Avenue pump station and the discharge main or the force main coming out of that pump station, which comes up Depot Street. There is also, many of the pipes have infiltration, meaning groundwater can infiltrate through the pipes and also through the manholes, through groundwater and also runoff during storm events. So that extra water that's not wastewater is conveyed to the wastewater treatment facility, which then stresses out the facility as far as the capacity of the plant and ability to treat normal wastewater. So we have given the town the results of all the TV inspections where all the issues were noted, such as root penetration, some cracks in the pipes, observed infiltration. So that's very useful to document and prioritize long-term improvements. We created, again, back to the mapping that we did of the system, we created a GIS system so that now with that program, you can basically click in the computer on each manhole and on the pipes and then see what the conditions are based on the CCV TV reports. And so you have a really good picture of what's needed for both short-term, which are the high-priority projects, and long-term. So at the conclusion of the report, which is actually now called a capital improvements plan, we have presented costs for addressing the high-priority projects and as well as presenting a budget plan for what that would look like if you were to take out a state revolving loan through, it's really a federally funded program. And there's some information at the, at the last section of the report that talks about subsidies that can be provided and what the financing would look like. So the report at this stage has been submitted to the state, it was submitted in December. We have received comments. We have reviewed those with, with both Jeff and Julie, and we'll be submitting a revised report at the end of this week.
And then can you explain, Naomi, that one of the benefits of making the changes that they asked for helps us skip a step?
Yes. So you may remember with some of the past projects that have been funded through the state revolving fund, there are three steps. The first step is planning, then it's final design, and the third step is construction. So the first step, planning, typically an asset management plan would not qualify as completing that step fully because it does not flesh out and follow the formula the state has for a preliminary engineering report. However, I was able to work with the state and add some additional items to the asset management plan, and one of them is really just presenting it as a capital improvements plan. So the final product will have, actually have a different name on it, it'll say capital improvements plan, but it will contain all of the asset management plan work and it will have a little bit further review of some of the environmental issues that could be encountered specific to the first two recommended projects being the force main replacement and the First Avenue pump station replacement.
Will they be ready to go with the sidewalk project if we ever get through with the railroad? Just as a wild guess.
Well, that's also one of Naomi's projects. It would be, I mean, potentially, you know, I mean, if I can get my rail easement, which I keep being told we're almost there, I think you, I think, yeah, anyway, we were, we're almost there from what I've been told. And if we could go out to bid sometime, I mean, I wouldn't want to go out to bid this summer, I would want to go out to bid over the winter and construct in '25, then it certainly timing could work together.
They could be concurrent. Now, of course, with the state revolving fund, and again, you'll see, we haven't talked about the cost, but that is presented in the, in the Section 7 of the report. If you were to do the pump station replacement, the force main replacement, and also some deficient gravity sewer pipes that are in the same area, the construction cost is estimated about 1.7 million, and then the total project cost, meaning all associated costs besides construction, is about a total of 2.5 million. So you would need to go through the bond vote process. Doesn't necessarily have to be next March, you could do an interim vote if you choose, but that is something to consider with the schedule, as well as the state's whole process for review of your funding application, which does take some time. 2025 is definitely possible, assuming that all of the state's review falls in line, and there are other options for breaking the project into, into at least two contracts.
So I noticed in the report, there was a discussion about the inflow and infiltration part of it. And the report mentioned that we could save a significant amount of money if we took care of that or reduce the inflow and infiltration of groundwater. The question I had, there was something in there that I just was curious about, and that was saying that the, the way that the flow was measured wasn't necessarily conclusive. So is that throw those numbers into any kind of doubt? Or how, how did that affect the, the estimate for fixing that?
Right, so what we concluded with the INI study, it was based, inflow infiltration. It was basically the first step of, of a whole analysis that can be taken for inflow infiltration studies. So the Phase 1 assessment is really to just, is put in meters in areas of the system, we broke it up into seven different areas, and to then identify, do we have a problem here or not? The, the meters that are closest to the wastewater treatment facility, where they're getting the most as flow, because they've collected the majority of the system, those showed the INI as a real occurrence compared to dry weather flows. However, the other areas, they were, the flow meters were, the data was suspect at some times, and we attributed that because the flows themselves were relatively small.
So, sorry to interrupt. Was that because the equipment that was used wasn't capable of measuring that low flow or was there some issue with that?
I think one of the issues that we did see was that debris could get caught, even, even sitting on the surface of, the bottom surface of the pipe, that were just creating erroneous readings.
Oh, okay.
So I don't think it was necessarily the flow meters, but I think that things would be more consistent if the flows were higher and just more consistent throughout the whole period of flow monitoring. But we did conclude in the study that regardless of the INI results, these areas, the pipes were identified for replacement based on the interior television inspections. So we found that, you know, there's a large majority of the system, which was constructed in 1971 from asbestos cement pipes, has cracks, has infiltration. And so for those reasons and the age, they're identified for replacement regardless of the INI.
So would that replacement include removal or just laying new pipe next to the old pipe?
Many of them could be removed. Some of them are candidates for lining the pipes, doing like a spray lining. However, there's also some pipes that have sags in them that wouldn't be, you know, if it's no longer a straight line in the pipe, it needs to be replaced.
Is, is, sorry to keep interrupting. Is there a disposal problem with the asbestos? I mean, if that comes out of the ground, it's got to be handled.
Yes.
But if we leave it in the ground, it's okay?
So you can, you can leave it in the ground. If you disturb it during construction, it can potentially be left in the ground. But all this is subject to review and approval by the Department of Health.
Right.
When it is taken out, similar to the water main that was taken out, really the same as the water main that was taken out on Route 103, where when it comes out, you have to keep the pipe wet. Has to be monitored for disposal. There are specialty consultants that can come in and do come in and basically educate the contractor on how to dispose of it. They give him facilities, basically it's like a large dumpster to put the broken pipes in.
Right, right. And then does it cost more to get rid of that than typical concrete?
Not necessarily, but like, for example, again, back to the Route 103 project, there wasn't a huge cost associated with the AC pipe removal.
Okay.
Yeah. So what we recommended is again, that the, dealing with the pipes that are deficient is more of a long-term plan. The town forces may choose to attack that in piecemeal and, you know, identify the highest, most efficient areas and do that work themselves, you know, because a lot of it's individual segments. And you'll see that on one of the maps in the report. So we color-coded based on the various deficiencies, infiltration is one of them.
Okay.
Naomi, you sent me an email this afternoon.
Yes.
And you mentioned that if we, I guess I'm not understanding, so if we don't do the Depot Street force main, but do something with First Avenue, are you talking about rerouting it?
Yes.
With changes, what was that about?
So one of the, one of the issues that will affect construction costs is the fact that the force main, it comes on First Avenue for a short period, but the majority of that line is on Route 103, Depot Street. So as you know, heavy truck traffic. So that is a complication for construction, traffic control's an issue. The rest of First Avenue is essentially parallel to Depot Street. So the force main doesn't necessarily need to come up Depot Street. If you come up First Avenue, it terminates at the same location. So an alternative route would be to go up First Avenue, and that's what we recommend to do because of the savings on construction cost and time to complete that.
So the construction costs that you mentioned earlier, do those include going up Depot or going down First Avenue?
They are up Depot.
They're up Depot.
And I'd probably, you know, I would adjust, we will adjust the numbers slightly, but I would be still conservative and, and keep, you know, they'll still be in the millions, a couple million.
You were talking about replacing the sewer line going up Depot Street anyway. Wouldn't you be running both of them in the same ditch, basically?
So we'd put the force main on First Avenue and just relocate where the force main is from Depot Street.
But you wouldn't do, I mean, in your, in your first part of this, you said that you would replace the Depot Street sewer line, too.
The gravity sewer.
The gravity sewer.
Yes. And what I would do, so thinking of this, what I would have recommended is, there are deficient gravity sewer pipes. Not all of Depot Street is deficient in the project area. Some of it is, maybe three-quarters. But there's also deficient pipes on, right here on Avon Street and on First Avenue and on North Street, the suction line coming into the station. So I would recommend the project that does the force main would address all the deficient gravity sewer pipes except for the one on Depot, and you could do that as a separate contract if you choose, and only because of timing. It's very critical, we believe, to replace the force main because it's restricted in the flow right now. It's a capacity issue. So if you prioritize that and then come back later and you could do the gravity sewer, make sure it's at the same timing as, or coordinated with the sidewalk project. But the First Avenue force main replacement in that location could go irregardless of the state. of the schedule of other improvements on Depot Street.
And that one seems like the priority because over the years, that's always ever heard is repairs on it, repairs on it. Is there a chance for a catastrophic fail on that main where we have to do it no matter what at this point?
It would, most likely, the failures would be points. So it would be, again, individual repairs on segments. It'd be very unlikely the whole segment would go.
So if, if you ran the, the force main up First Avenue, would you extend the sewer up First Avenue as well?
No, that is not in the plan. Meaning add additional users onto the main?
Right.
Yes. That is not, that is not in the project at this point.
But if we wanted to do it, that would certainly be the time.
The town chose to, to expand the sewer collection area. You could do it at that time if you choose.
So all the First Avenue stuff would roll down the hill back to the same pump station because it's not going to head up the hill, right?
Correct.
It would contribute to the pump station capacity or whatever is going on there.
Great. And you'd want, you know, if that was something the town wanted to do, you'd certainly need to identify that early on.
Jeff, you got to come up to the mic.
You got to come to the mic, just because Zoom can't hear you.
Otherwise, they're not going to hear you.
I believe all the residents on First Avenue are on the sewer system now.
Okay.
So I don't believe you would be adding at this point.
Okay.
Thanks. So this document is the last document we would need to, to go to, to get funding.
Correct. So you would then be able to apply for the final design funding, which does not require a bond vote at this stage, and then go ahead with design and then go forth to step three, which is the construction, put that project out to bid for contractors.
And, and the costs for these are, are borne by the water and sewer users. It's not a town cost at this, I mean, it never has been.
No.
Right. It's passed on through the user, to the user, through the sewer rates.
And there is some, I mean, there are some grant funds. I mean, certainly aren't going, not going to help with $2 million. But there is, can you speak a little bit to that program?
Right. So there's a 50% subsidy, which 50% of the cost is, is, the town does not need to repay, and that was what funded the asset management plan report. The 50% also applies for construction, but there's a cap on it of, so you, the cap is $750,000. So you could qualify for that and most likely will, but, which would not cover the full 50%. It'd be capped at the $750,000. Again, subsidy, you don't have to pay that money back.
Three quarters of a million, something. I'll take it if you don't want, yeah.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments regarding the wastewater system?
I think I used up my allotment of questions.
Thank you, Naomi, for your patience.
This is a very, very nice, for me, easy to read and, and really well, simple to understand. I really appreciate you every put into this.
I should mention that the other benefit of this, again, is the fact it's GIS. So the same company, Cartographics Associates of New Hampshire, who does the parcel mapping for the town, the access system, can take this data and put it online, so it's accessible. So, I mean, certainly the town can use it, and as, as, actually, that's a, that's a good reminder to me that going forward to the next step, I would like to work with Cartographics and see if they can, I've talked with them about this, participate in a project for the town where, if you could qualify for funding to get tablets and technology so that Jeff could have this out in the field, they could help train him on how to use, and his staff on how to use that equipment. So basically, he could go out to a manhole, or in the case of the water system, a hydrant, and click on that object and get information on it, but also add to the information. So.
And they do have, they already have iPads.
Yeah.
So they're ready.
Yeah.
But during the course of this study, wasn't it true that they discovered a lot of manholes that we didn't know we even had?
Well, I defer to Jeff, but certainly they were, there were manholes that were dug up so that they could be then surveyed. So, yeah.
Well, I just think it's really important to know what we have, and a document like this that outlines every aspect of it by size and condition and where it is and location is a great first step to try to address some of the issues that are presented in there. And now it's going to be a matter of funding.
Correct.
Which is.
We'll start to go after as much funding as we can get. Yeah.
So that's the, the waste, anybody else, any other questions? Is that a hand up at the Chester Telegraph? Is that our cursor?
No, it's our cursor.
All right, our cursor.
It's the curse.
You mentioned the parcel, that it's the same company that's doing the GIS for the wastewater that does the parcel viewer software?
So what it is, is they can take our data, the GIS data, and they can upload that to their system and make that available in the same way as the parcel mapping is.
But it's a different company.
Uh, no. So basically, we use ArcGIS, and so that's probably, that's the same software that they use. And so they could basically host the data that's already been developed by us.
Well, my brain goes to, could we overlay the sewer and water system eventually on the parcel viewer system?
Yes, you can.
That would be great.
That's exactly what they would do.
Just different layers of it.
Yeah, just different, yeah. There are already different layers.
And you'll see that, like, you could go to other communities, do that, and you could see that as, as examples.
Maybe even layer the ash trees on it, too.
When we did our, when we did, when we put our parcel maps online, actually, our zoning is online, not the zoning, I'm sorry, the listers cards are all online. You can access that online. That program is the program that we would use. So we already have the platform. It's, and they told me, anything you have digital can be added to this.
Nice.
That, that already has the base, and that was funded a few years ago through some grant funding the state gave to all the municipalities to start digitizing stuff. So we have the platform. We just can build on it now.
It's a, it's a great platform.
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
Any other questions? Just head on to our lead line inventory. This one should be a little simpler, a little easier to deal with.
It is a little simpler. So first, the background on the lead line inventory. So EPA requires that every single water system in the United States has an inventory completed of their water services to determine the material, and all of these inventories must be completed by October of 2024. So the state of Vermont has provided significant funding for communities. Chester received funding for, to pay 100% of the cost of the inventory. Your inventory is complete, and it has been approved by the state, as well as a replacement plan. So for Chester, you have no lead lined pipes that have been identified. There are seven galvanized services requiring replacement, and two that still need some research to identify exactly what they are. So that's good news. You don't have a lot of work to do to address the lead line issues.
The galvanizer being the older ones, and the issues with them is they just, they're corroded and they get, they close down, or?
Well, so with the new regulations that came out December 2021, any galvanized requiring replacement, and I'll explain how we get that definition, must also be replaced because if you can't prove that a galvanized pipe never was downstream of a lead line pipe, it's considered a lead service because a study showed that the galvanized piping can absorb lead. So if you can't prove that the upstream piping was never lead, and you have a galvanized pipe, it needs to be replaced. However, for Chester, all seven of these services, the galvanized portion is the customer's portion. So Chester, like many water systems, owns to the curb stop, and from the curb stop to the building is the customers who own that. That's normal. But, and again, in all seven cases, the galvanized portion is not the town-owned portion. So you're not under any requirements or schedule at this point to replace those lines, and it's probably going to be at least five years, if not longer, before you're regulated to have those lines replaced.
Or the life expectancy just ends up leaking or doing whatever it does, because over the years, I remember replacing quite a few of those
Yeah.
galvanized lines.
Yeah.
But not so much, not so often anymore.
So the town has done what you need to do under the regulations. You need to continue to notify these customers that they do have a galvanized line that needs to be replaced, but that's the extent. And you do need to do that on an annual basis. You also need to make the inventory publicly available, which has been done.
Did we do any chemical testing of anything?
No, no, just identif, visual identification.
Right, right.
Part of the replacement plan, which is essentially a template, you say, what would the town do for future steps? And you say, these are, you know, basically, the state gives you a list of, here's your options, here's possibilities that you could do, and you may choose to do chemical testing, and that's listed as you may in the report.
So a test for lead on water is, I, I not kept up with the cost in that, but it's going to be, what, 50 bucks?
Probably. And they're not necess, they're, they're not necessarily conclusive is the issue. So the visual identification is, is, you know, that's the most common.
Right.
You can also do excavation.
No, I just was, excuse me, curious if homeowner wanted to test their water, if they have a galvanized pipe, they wanted to test it for lead, they could do that.
Yeah.
It'd cost 50 bucks or whatever.
So they, first, they tested for the lead. That's all good for them to find out, but this doesn't, if it, they happen to test higher than the, the maximum required, it could be just because of the lead solder that's in their, their pipes in their houses.
Yeah.
And not necessarily, and I can guarantee, most likely not from the, the water system itself.
Yeah. No, I just was thinking about the, the galvanized pipes.
And the EPA is changing the, the lead requirement. They're going from, I think it's a .015 is what per billion, going down to a .010 is going to be coming along. So it's good, they're, they're lowering the lead
Yeah.
standards. But if they do test, it could very well be the solder in their, in their residence.
So does, sorry to keep asking these questions. Is the state lead level less than or greater than or equal to the EPA lead levels?
It's currently the same.
Same.
Yeah.
A lot of the laws, it seems that, especially like asbestos and other things and those PCPs and stuff, the, the limits in, for the state were a lot more stringent than the federal ones.
Yeah, they have been in the past.
That is true, yeah.
And usually, that's the case of Vermont, it seems. Well, that's, that's an interesting one. And then now we have the complete map out of all the water mains, the water lines, the sizes and stuff, because I know we've talked about this before, about asset management, knowing what we have to help with future development, to help with future maintenance and everything else that goes along with it and stuff.
So I'm just curious about the unknowns. So is that like, we don't know what kind of metal it is, or we haven't seen it?
So of the two unknowns, one is listed as an unknown because the property is currently vacant.
Yep.
And so the town has sent a notice to the property owner saying, you know, it's just, it's non-occupied building. And so it really just needs to make arrangements to go inside
Oh, okay.
the facility and
Yeah.
and find out.
Interesting. Thank you.
Any other questions on the lead line inventory? I guess we'll go right on to the last one, which is our secondary well.
So the secondary well, there were source explorations completed with Jeff Hoffer, hydrogeologist, and he looked at two sites, and one of them was the Jeffrey Well site, and that site, the first site, ended up being the most promising. And so he has proposed in a report that he provided in January to proceed with a production well adjacent to the existing Jeffrey Well on the same parcel. And that would be basically as a, it'd probably end up being your primary source, being the newer source, but it may have the same, similar capacity. So you'd end up with two wells on that single parcel. With the successful production well being developed, that project, we would recommend to include a new wellhouse facility, standby generator. So you'd have brand-new facilities for the new well. And so he has proposed to proceed, basically this summer, with the production well development and permitting. It's a project that would take at least six months, maybe a year, to go through the full permitting process.
And when they investigated the sites, I know they had one on the Holden site, it was a different type of well. It was a drilled well into bedrock, whereas the Jeffrey Well is a gravel pack well or some, some phrase like that.
Right. And so we have, I don't know if you've seen the report, but it's pretty descriptive and talks even about the different capacities, comparing the Jeffrey Well, the Holden site, the new Jeffrey Well and the existing Jeffrey Well. So that description you write is described, it's on second page of his report, if you have a copy of that.
50 to 100 gallons a minute?
Yeah.
Yeah, 50 to 100, I believe.
You know, and that compares to your existing Jeffrey Well, you know, I think it operates right now at like 400, 450 gallons per minute. Yeah. And it's expected to get the same capacity, but a better well, but ultimately the same capacity, to be determined.
Were there any other sites in town that were considered, or there, there just weren't available, or just?
We did screening, that was a earlier report Jeff developed, and he did look townwide and developed a list of the most promising sites, considering not only, not only the geology, but also proximity to existing water mains, so cost, visibility compared to, you know, say, in the middle of town versus somewhere a little bit more remote. So those kind of issues, potential sources of contamination being distant from the well. So those, those were the top two that were pursued.
So just, sorry I didn't read this report in full. I just scanned it before tonight, but I did recall that there was a recommendation that we try to find, to, to put the backup well on a different aquifer. And here, it sounds like it's going to be in the same aquifer as the Jeffrey.
That is correct. So that relates to different staff at the state who reviewed the, the project. Previously, the previous hydrogeologist, who has since retired, was not a proponent of having the new well in the same aquifer. He felt it was more, it was safer, less risk, to have them in different aquifers. However, the, the proposal was never to run them at the same time. It was only to be running one.
But it was in case of contamination was
Yes.
was the safety factor there.
Correct.
So that's no longer a factor?
Again, it's always a risk, but in this case, none of the parcels that were considered that were remote had as much potential yield for the well.
So we just can't get enough water anyplace else that we've, that we've looked?
Yeah. We went to the most promising sites, and the existing site is the most promising.
Okay.
The, the current hydrogeologist staff at the state do endorse the proposal to have a well in the same aquifer.
Because the odds of the aquifer becoming contaminated are probably pretty astronomical, we hope.
Right. Well, I mean, if you think of the history of the town of Chester, has this one ever been contaminated?
Not as long as I've been here.
Right.
But the other one has, the School Street well, the reason that was shut down because of the gas leak at Brownie's Garage or whatever it was.
Cool, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the question I have reading through this report, I thought it was very well done, and I don't know enough about the methods of testing and all that stuff, but it seems like the results are expected based on the proximity to the existing well and all that. I, I would disagree with the state that having it in the same aquifer is the best idea for the reasons that you stated before, but that's water under the bridge, or out the well, or whatever.
Water in the ground.
Yeah. Do you know if, when they were looking at other sites, was it just a, a survey and there was no testing done, or was there testing done?
There was no testing done.
Okay. Because I, you know, to me, the, the areas where you would have potential water supply would be the cent, the middle branch of the Williams River or the north branch of the Williams River. So just curious, as you go further, Route 11, you'd probably have some pretty decent areas out there, but if we haven't done any testing, then wouldn't necessarily know.
Right.
The other question I had, and I don't know if you know this, but looking at the graph of the, of the first test, where it looks like there were only a few water level measurements right at the beginning of the test, do you know if they use pressure transducers? Was that hand measurements or, because normally what I would expect to see is a, is a steep drop in water drop in water level, and then it would bounce back a little bit as the, as the aquifer recovers during that. And I'm not seeing that particular point. The other question was relative to figure, it's not a figure, no, but it's the observation well data. Did we collect water level measurements out of the well itself, the pumping well, the Jeffrey Well?
So what I, I would defer to Jeff Hoffer, and I can pass these questions on to him, the, the author of the report, the hydrogeologist.
Okay. Yeah, just curious, I mean, he's got his email in here, I can email him if that's okay.
Yeah.
But I just, I'm curious, because in the past, when I've done this type of thing, we've measured everything and its brother, and I just didn't see those data reported. So I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Do you want, do you, do you want to email Jeff, or do you, are you okay with, would Jeff be okay with the select board emailing him directly? What do you think?
Why don't you send it to me, and I can certainly copy you
Okay.
when I transmit the questions to him.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, go back to the unlikely possibility of the aquifer becoming contaminated. Are we kind of locked into this at this point, or do we still have other options, or has it become a cost issue, or, what, what options do we have?
Right. So, so you may want to look at the previous reports that Jeff prepared, and, and I had worked on and submitted to the state, the preliminary engineering report supplement to a previous system-wide preliminary engineering report, which talked about the various sites and went through the process of narrowing those down, just to make, see if you're comfortable with the recommendations and the steps that have been taken so far to get to this point. Because after those reports were done, then the plan was to look at the Holden site and to look at this site, which the select board did approve as a cost for 75,000. So if you want to, I'd say, you know, if there's, there's reluctance to proceed, then I should send those reports to you again.
I have to be careful. I'm, I'm the new person here, so I'm clearly missing some data points, and.
Well, I, I know in the past, I've taken issue with the states. I don't know if it's their recommendation or the requirement, or just dragging their heels on looking for a different site other than this one. So I, I don't know, maybe I'm misremembering something. But to me, and, and the author of the report, what's his name again?
Jeff Hoffer.
Jeff Hoffer said something about the salt
From highways?
from the highways, and it's like, well, there you go. There's your contamination, because if we're salting the roads and we're seeing that salt in the aquifer, water coming out, then, you know, tanker truck tips over and dumps a load of gas or oil or whatever, we're done. So that's the concern that I have, and it's not really anyplace else in town that's not going to be susceptible to that either. But if we have the option, this one gets contaminated, we turn one on over somewhere else, then. But we spent an awful lot of money. We've been down this road before. Poor Naomi's been here multiple times, trying to answer questions. Yeah, but I'm not saying that we should just give up on that and say, you know, we're good to go in this, and spend another, whatever it is to put this well in.
I think if I remember right, some of the past reports and stuff, a lot of it was the landowners of the properties that might be conducive to have a well, and then there's that 200-foot zone or distance that you have to be away from almost anything, which is hard to find anywhere near where the water system is and where the water mains are. So there, there were some factors that made it extremely hard to find a high yield with the same geology with that type of well in a location that fit all those criteria. They could find wells like at Holden property, 50 to 100 and things like that, especially if you go up the middle branch on Route 11 heading west, because most of those wells up that way, the private wells, they're overflowing. It's, it is a, a good aquifer or something that's, you know, comes into play there. But to meet all the requirements that the state wants and the offsets and the capacities and stuff seem like that was a hard thing to accomplish.
Well, not, not to keep muddying the waters, so to speak. If the town ends up with two properties, now three properties side by side by side on Route 11 West, right in the, the flood plain.
The problem is, we don't have a water line up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we'd be spending a couple million dollars running water line.
Doesn't it come right down Reservoir Road?
You'd have the water line there, but the problem is, you can't put any structures on that land.
Well, and also, you have
Under the, the guidelines of the buyout, nothing can go there?
Correct. You cannot put any structures. You can leave it as an open park, but there can be no structures, because the whole point is to get structures out of the floodplain.
You couldn't get it 200 feet from the road. You'd have to put it on the other side of the river.
Well, I was going to say, and back to Arnie's point, when we did the initial screening, and there was probably, you know, say, I'd say at least a dozen potential sites, and one of them, we pointed out, was one of the buyouts that, that happened for Irene, which was out on Route 11 West.
Yeah.
And again, it was, the parcel's just too small, too close to the road.
Right.
Location looks nice for all the other reasons, but once you put that 200-foot radius on. So those of 12 were screened down to ultimately maybe five. And of the top three, the third one, after the two that we actually developed, looked to, was the town recreation parcel on Lover's Lane. But because of the potential for doing additional improvements there for the community, that site was rejected, and so then we came down to these final two.
Which site was that, Neil?
Um, the, where the pool is on
Oh, yeah.
So that had good potential from, from a hydrogeology standpoint, but in land use, but considering future land uses, it was rejected.
Well, if the pool leaked, we wouldn't have to chlorinate the water.
We got a lot of water leaks tonight.
We already don't chlorinate the water, so.
I know.
We really wouldn't have to.
Any other, Jeff, you want to make another comment?
To make, you're talking about Route 11 West, and you're talking about contamination. In my memory, I can remember three tanker trucks wrecking on that road
Mm-hmm.
and spilling into the water out there, because that's a main route for the gasoline tankers to go to New York State. So you're going to have a, probably an increased risk of a spillage affecting the water. Also, I mean, I've been pushing this for a long time. Somebody's probably sick of me talking about having redundancy with the well. And I've been worried about something happening there, you know, this, we're, we're supposed to have the capacity for five days of emergency backup water in the tanks and everything else. And currently, if something happened to that well, if everything was full, I'm thinking we're about three days, because our water production and water usage has gone from 145,000 a day up to 200,000 plus a day, because of people in this town and, and the businesses and everything. And I'm just concerned that we're not going to be ready if, when we need it. And my main point about putting, having another well up there is we can shut that one down and run the other one. We're not going to run them both at the same time, but we will at least have a continuous water production facility there. And I just think while you're making your decisions, you need to consider those factors as well.
Yeah. Which goes back to the generator part two also. So when the power goes off, the generator's there to produce the water, and that's, from that point, you're all set. Any other questions?
Thank you for your patience, Neil.
That was some interesting reading, and I appreciate all the work.
Thanks, Neil. Always good to see you. Haven't seen you in a long time.
The next item is liquor license, and for Sandry Second Class Tobacco, Tobacco Substitute, American Legion for outside consumption, and Jiffy Mart Second Class Tobacco Substitute.
You don't have to sign them. You just need motions. You could approve them all.
Do them all.
You could do them all in one, if you wanted.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor licenses, et cetera.
Et cetera.
Now, does this, does this include the, the event?
And the well.
No, entertainment, entertainment is a different.
Okay. So, yeah, liquor license, tobacco license for Global Montello Group, which is Jiffy Mart, and the Sandry, and there was one other.
American Legion.
American Legion.
All right. Second. Leaves the motion, and Peters the second. Any discussion on them?
I'm going to ask this, just because I've heard everybody ask it every time before, when I was sitting out there. How's the police department feel about these?
No concerns.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That part's taken care of. And the next thing is an entertainment permit for Heritage Deli.
So I'll make a motion to accept the application for an entertainment license for Heritage Deli and Bakery, Inc.
Second. Leaves the motion, Peters the second, and Heritage Deli, and it's weekends through the summer and fall. Music on their tents, beer and wine tasting, live music paired with a fundraising event, weekends usually Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, late afternoon. There's never been an issue there. They've always
No.
been pretty straightforward, what, what's going on. It just gives them some flexibility. It's not every weekend, but when they do have it.
She does a lot of fundraising, too.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Future agenda items, new business. Anybody have anything they would like to see?
Your next agenda's pretty full, if you noticed in the memo.
Yep. Fire Department.
Yeah, Fire Department, Community Health. The local cannabis control committee has a, an appointment. Heather will hopefully be here for your legislative update. You'll adopt your local emergency management plan, and I'm hoping that Jim will have completed the review of the short-term rental policy. My hope.
There's only been, I think the press, Preston was saying there was only one application
Only one.
for the, uh, Airbnb, uh, short-term rentals since, since the first.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, I don't know if we want to talk about this now or not, but my question about that was Kathy Hasbrook mentioned that the software showed eight or nine that are advertising that are not registered.
Well, part of that software thing is trying to track them down and, and take care of the issues as, as they show up, because the information, you know, notices and whatever they have to do to, to make it work, but I guess
That would be an enforcement issue.
Right. And, you know, maybe that's something that, I don't know, I don't know, Kathy and Preston are always super busy. Now that Julian's out of the way for Preston, maybe that
Free up.
It'd be nice to get some feedback, some updates on that.
Yes, sure. Sure.
Anything else for future agenda items?
I, I had a question. I don't know if it's worth a future agenda item, but I meant to ask this when we were approving the liquor licenses. I noticed that Sandry's doing a bunch of remodeling. Are they planning on putting in a drive-through final?
I don't think the Dunkin' Donuts is going in.
The property we gave them several years ago is, okay.
We should have put a clause in that one.
We should have. You know, that, it's really disappointing to me.
You're going to tax them on it now.
What's that?
You're going to tax them on it. You put property back on the grant list, so.
We did, and we did get a little money.
Yeah, it was not what it, anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just was curious, because they made a bunch of noise about it a couple, several years ago, and now it's not happening, so.
That's what we needed, Dunkin' Donuts, right?
I wouldn't have minded, would I?
Not me. I hate, I hate their coffee.
Me, too.
It's gross. It's like, ugh.
Donuts are good.
Want me to read that?
I was just going to let the board know, that that invite came in the mail today.
Right there was, yeah.
Oh.
It's an invite.
Snowmobile Club. It's a letter thanking the select board.
They do this every year.
And in appreciation, they're hosting a landowner thank you barbecue Saturday, June 1st, under the gazebo at the Chester Rec on Lover's Lane.
They do this every year for anybody that allows
Eleven and two. Cool. So bring your family to this barbecue, as everyone is invited, and the more the merrier.
Or they'll advertise that ahead of, between now and June 2nd, June 1st, whatever date it was.
I wouldn't count on it. Write it down on your calendar now, if you're going to go.
Anything else for future agenda items?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.